Call the meeting to order. This is the meeting of the Hamilton Board of Selecting and Board of Health. Being held in Townhouse Auditorium, September 20th, 2021 at 6:00 P. M. The meeting is being conducted in person and also remotely according to Governor Baker's March 2020 emergency order. Please stand for the flag relating. Thank you. Is anyone recording the meeting besides us? Before we begin, I'd like to make a public service announcement. It's Constitution Week in Market. Market constitutions are available in the library at the Hamilton Townhouse. No charge.
So those are autographs. Very nice. From your collection?
Well, the autograph. A little charge.
No, not by you, but the author.
The last, the last few, did you say autograph by Madison?
All right. The first item of business is a continuation. We recessed the dog hearing back in, earlier in September. Regarding the dog on North, North, North Road. Governor here and remind everyone that they're still on the oath.
I just want to have them checked it out. I mean, it's coming on. He should be here any minute.
Okay.
It looks really good, but I would say they probably need about two more weeks to really finish it. It's really dumb, but they have to, they want to secure the bottom, so they can't get out. And they just had to finish the back a little bit, but they've done a wonderful job.
And there's been no other complaints?
No, and she makes sure she lets them out when she, she's out with them. They're only out when she's out with them in the, in the kennel area. They're not, they haven't had one.
Mr. Fleming, right?
Yes. He should, he should be here. He just pulled in when I left his house at the five or six.
And any other from before? We have two other situations that you were monitoring, and you go on them.
No.
Main Street and South Road.
South Road.
Is Main Street paid?
No, that's, I need to check on that. I'll check with Eva.
Is it you from the annual control office?
Nope.
I have top.
Everything's been good.
Are beavers behaving in town?
Well, I don't know any in town, but I know some in Summers, and they are behaving well, because that's where I paddleboard. And I haven't seen him, and now I'm kind of afraid to swim in there. Yeah, that was awful.
Biggest problem we used to have was at the farm, at the crossing on, he's on the road. That one used to.
Yep, yep. Oh, here he is.
Reminds you that he's still on the oath from the previous hearing, previous part of the hearing.
Yes.
Shelley gave us an update, said that things are coming along fine. It seems that you know other problems right now, that's. And she is suggesting we're going to need another two weeks to finish things up.
Yeah, three to two weeks. Just like to do the bottom and the back.
Yes.
Yes. You're busy man.
Yes. It's like 24 hours in a day. Lucky enough to work twelve.
So, and again, so we'll, we'll continue it for another two weeks. And again, I want to thank you for your cooperation and willingness to work with us to resolve any potential problems.
Likewise. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good.
Right. Great.
Is Eva here?
She's in the building.
We have a request from the Hamilton Wilburham Partners in Youth. They're, who advertise a program they're having. It's parody mouth. Tips and tools for strengthening families will be held Wednesday, October 6th, 7:30 P. M. It's a virtual workshop. The, it's Hamilton Wilburham, H W P four Y dot org. And they're asking us to, to explain, help us play this and prove if people want one, someone should do that.
Yes. I will do that. I got the email.
Getting something, we're going to do these two things. We have a, the Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 9397 is asking for a one-day alcohol permit on September 25th. About to move for a memorial service.
Make a motion to approve the memorial service. One-day liquor permit Saturday, September 25th from 12:00 P. M. to 4:00 P. M.
And we also, another request from the Veterans of Foreign War Post 9397. For a one-day alcohol beverage permit on Saturday, October 23rd, from 12:00 noon to 12:00 midnight for a Jack and Jill party.
Make a motion to, is that what it is? Second, I don't know if you could do it that way. Sounds good.
All in favor?
One thing I do caution, we do verify that none of these are on the date. A lot of the shooting, so there will never be a, a one-day permit on Sunday.
That's Saturday.
And while you're on the topic of the B, Helen Shankle came in today. Helen Shankle. Yeah. She couldn't come down the stairs, but she, she got me up there and said, I want to make sure that you know that I still protest, Ray and I still protest, and they can hear it. And she's, actually her final remark was she doesn't want you to think she's lost her marbles. She still is annoyed by, by the shooting.
The next item on our agenda is the town's work and moderator in regards to the special town meet will be held October 18th, 2021.
They don't let me do anything by myself. I need trainings.
Microphone doesn't work. You can speak into it.
I was speaking to you, so you can hear it, but.
Do I ask?
Same deal.
I asked, any other comments if there are any issues with the upcoming town meeting?
I have not heard that anything is going to be enforced of COVID, not like we've had in the past. I think that's kind of a, more of a particular whether it even chooses to or not.
And I think the separation that we saw at the meetings in the past few weeks, which is same over the last year.
Well, we can go all the way from, so I have a meeting tomorrow morning at seven with Herb, just to go through it one more time. We can go all the way from what we did at the first gathering we, we had once COVID started, which was everything from signing in under the portico, hand sanitizing masks. We can fit roughly 106 people in the cafeteria spacing six, allowing for six feet spacing apart between groups. Using the squares in the floor. I mean, it's kind of self-explanatory. Or we can go all the way back to where we were, and we're prepared for either. I'll go over it with Herb tomorrow. Not that I need to. He's, he's got it pretty well in hand, so all he needs to know is A, B, or C, and then he's ready to go. So we're fine.
You say that. I think too, I know that there is a proposal I'm expecting for a warrant article with regard to self-storage. And that will probably drop people. We usually have about 100 at any county at our annual. Is there, is there not a proposed warrant article?
No.
Okay. I, I have heard that there would be one. Let's say we usually have about a hundred-hour annual meeting, but only about 50 at the fall county meeting. So even if it drew someone, I think that the 106th capacity we have with the spacing should be sufficient.
I think with the current warrant we have right now, we're in the canyon, there's really no, I would say hop up and topics. I mean, we're talking about using money to offset expenses, possibly increase the savings account, possibly drop the tax rate. These are all good things.
Oh, yeah, they are.
So what I just, what I just handed out is that is worst-case scenario, the checklist we used at the first meeting we had under COVID. So we can, we can go to the extreme, which will do whatever has to be done. I mean, obviously the goal is to ensure the comfort of the public, so we get as large an attendance as possible. Once that's said, we can go anything from that to a scaled-down version. And whatever Eva needs, we'll, we'll make happen. Like I said, Herb is pretty, just tell them what we need, and he's going to help us get it done under each one. We've got A, B, or C laid out already, so.
Then we're going to have a microphone, but not a floor microphone.
We can do whatever you want. I mean, you folks still, the sound system is here. Actually, I take that back, because the sound system over at T W B in storage now, or did it come back here? We talked.
Take it back over.
All right, because we talked about the potential for getting a second one to leave there. That doesn't matter to me. That was a suggestion just so it would be there. When yours comes over, it can come over without a floor microphone, one or two. You typically almost end up with two simply because advisory has one with them, because otherwise we're going back and forth. But again, the microphones sometimes cancel each other out until they can grab the channel, which makes hearing a little trippy and, you know, intermittent. So we can do whichever you want. I mean, we can simply move the microphone back and forth between us, or just leave it and make it work.
The other thing that we have been talking about, been suggesting that we use a projector rather than the TV, so we're projecting up on the drop-down screen.
I have.
Over, a big screen that comes down.
No, no, but I mean for, for the tele, televising of the meeting or for just for.
Both. And then when we do screen sharing, people in the audience can see it much better when it's up on a, you know, 25' wide screen.
I have one, John. It arrived today.
Best Buy or Amazon?
What's that?
Best Buy or Amazon?
Actually, Best Buy. Need to do less business with Amazon, so I'm going to take it over and test it out.
So again, not to beat it to death, what you have in your hands is just worst-case scenario. It's not saying the way it's done.
Yep.
I mean, it's your meeting until, so it lands on us that night, so whatever you want to do, we'll do and go from there. And then once, as long as we get a sense of what the state's doing and/or what Board of Health feels is going to be appropriate for the meeting, we can make the final adjustment. Keeping in mind, Herb sets it up for Friday before, so as long as we make a decision by Thursday night, he's just going to set it up the way we need it.
What was the capacity last time we, we?
Last, last time it was more because we didn't do the same spacing. I think we had it up to about 140 if we used the sides. So because we tried.
There were people lined up with that.
There was. Yeah.
They do that anyhow. I mean, Thursday, seats available. A lot of people stand back there.
Like church, they're standing there.
I mean.
It's like church.
I avoid the collection plate just standing back.
Quicker exit.
But on the, you know, even when we did the first meeting after COVID, and we tried the assigned seating, even people directing folks to their seats, people are just, no, I'm going to do what I want. You know, how much do you want, how much do you want to fight with them? It's, you know, as long as we can keep people reasonably safe. My, firstly, my thing is so that everybody who's watching this meeting tonight or prepping to come feels safe. And as long as they feel safe, people will come and we'll go from there. And you're going to, and I saw the thing, you're going to, you're going to teleconference it, and we'll have it there. Yeah, that's fine.
I think too, the point you brought up about more to help, I mean, if they have recommendations, because maybe they know more, something more current than we do, but I don't really see a problem.
At this point, the numbers in town do not give the any action at all.
That's a good thing. I'd like to hear that.
Well, that being the case, then I'll tell Herb to plan for a regular setup. You know, that'll make it, it makes it easier for him, so as opposed to laying it out. I mean, he, he went way over the first, like he numbered the seats and everything. And that got to me.
Well, you see how many people in town go to Big E and come back.
Yeah. We'll, we'll be fine either way.
That's true.
So we're good. We just, as long as you guys are ready, tell us what you want. I mean, Eva, Eva and I talk anyway, so we're, we're good.
Good. Thank you.
Speaking of talking though, I do have one thing I'd like to bring up. John sent out an email, and that's the only reason I was aware that we were supposed to be here. I know I probably could read the agenda, but I've posted them and I'm done. Communication would be nice. Give us a little heads up.
Always, always something is worth trying for communication and transparency.
Yes, that would be, thank you. No, I want to thank you again. I would.
Oh, we're, we're lucky we're here at night, Eva. That never happens.
I know. It was one of those rare moments.
From that, from that end of it, John and I happen to be talking about something else that you mentioned, otherwise I wouldn't know.
Oh, thank you for coming.
We're here.
And thank you for going to meet with Herb, Herb tomorrow morning too.
Awesome. He's, he's fine.
Putting for the guest when we have the moderator.
Oh, yeah. I think I've yet to cash that check. I'm going to let it build up till it gets to like 140.
I think you have to issue a check.
My, my selectmen check is better, but I don't think, I think we're going to that.
Let's sweep the moderators account. Thank you.
Can have it all.
We have 16 articles, and I think it's still the intention of the selectmen to close the warrant next week, 27th.
So when you, when you folks vote to close the warrant, you'll do the final modifications. We can have that 45-minute with Rose and just.
Well, I mean, as you know, it's two different things, closing and actually having four.
No, 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 because the way it's, the way we've had it working, it's working well, is that as we see it, and then Bob and I, Bob will send it. And then for me, not that you care, I color-coded it to make it an agenda I can follow. And then after that, we have a quick recap with Rose to make sure the wording is right and the questions match up, and we're done. The whole goal is, you know, for us to be like a referee at a boxing match. You never see us in a soft fight, so.
I think the board right now feels that we have all the warrant articles we're anticipating at this point. There's some text to fill in.
Definitely.
Get all the text and the numbers.
Yeah. I saw the rough warrant, and it's clearly, it's pretty straightforward. Movements, they're, they're all majority, unless of course there's, I saw there was a placeholder for a bylaw one. If there's a bylaw one, that's going to be two-thirds, but aside from that, it's going to be pretty straightforward.
No real reason appropriate.
My only thought for what it's worth, and not to belabor this or keep us going, we all have stuff to do, but if you're going to look at doing a general bylaw one, my, my personal then, even when I was a selectman, was always that zoning bylaws and general bylaws be amended at the annual town meeting. I mean, special town meeting is always, historically was designed as a cleanup meeting, not town meeting part two. So, and it's historically not nearly as well-attended, and when you're talking about something that has such broad appeal, which is a bylaw change, again, whether it's general bylaw, regular bylaw, to me, it's not a housekeeping item, and special town meeting is not its place. There's a lot of people that disagree with that opinion, but I offer it to them.
The same, kind of people feel the same thing about, you know, CBA or those things like that. You want the broadest exposure to major things like that.
And again, special town meeting has kind of lost its quote-unquote "real" meaning, real meaning, because it's not special anymore. It's a, it's a cleanup.
Financial cleanup.
Yeah, which is never used.
A lot does, it never happened.
Special town meeting?
Yeah.
I mean, theoretically, they are what they are, but we, but because of the general court and the fact that the budgets were never passed on time, you never knew your cherry sheet until July, so you, you couldn't do anything about it. That was the whole premise or the push to move, you know, to allow the law to change, to move town meetings out more towards the fall, so that the cherry sheets would be set, and it just couldn't happen.
And the other thing is some towns don't actually do anything with their free cash. Wolverhampton, they keep it separate, so they don't have to do any stuff.
Right, so.
I'm sorry. That's the thing too, free cash isn't even set until we have our town meeting. So you really don't know what you're dealing with or what you have available, and that was, as Rick said, that's what county meeting, fall county meeting was all about.
But since unfortunately not the town, we're looking to adjust the tax rate, that's why this, that part loses purpose.
Which is, it is what it is. It's like anything else. It's changed a long way from the, from the R45 or something, but I don't know.
Constitution week, speaking of our 45.
I've got that booklet on my desk.
They're like for sale. Keep mentioning it. Seriously.
I think it's good that you mentioned. Somebody's got to remember. It's sliding out the door on us.
All right. Thank you.
You're good. I will email you all back tomorrow after I meet with Herb, and I'll keep you posted on what he says, although, again, there's going to be nothing earth-shaking. It's plan A or B or C, and we'll be ready for any of the above.
Yeah, I think the biggest thing is making sure the microphone speaker part is good and testing the projector, not the light up before.
Well, you know, it's a good point. Maybe what we'll do is I'll work with Bob, and then we'll get the microphone and everything over there on Friday afternoon instead of setting it up on Monday. And because you guys have your, you know, the board always met there on Monday anyway, so if you're going to need it, you're going to need it then. And that'll save Bob or Pam having to figure out how to lug it over as the night progresses. That's fine. We're good.
We'll do a practice meeting. Maybe a lot of conditions could happen next meeting.
I'll see if I have my head. All right.
Thank you.
All right. As always.
Good evening. Yeah.
Fire chief expansion project. I apologize for not being attending the other meeting, the visit. Issue take care of.
So we worked. Monson was pretty good, pretty informative, and then we got a, we got a lot. Ed was with us. Lisa was with us. They were in desperate need of a building it looks like too, so they're going through the motions. They have two things set up for two options. One's a remodel, one's a brand-new building, new location.
Building.
Yeah.
Their actual cost wasn't that different.
Wasn't much difference between the costs. I think it was like right around the same price. Also, I think their, their budget was 16 million, roughly 21,000 square feet. That's what they're going to be expanding to. Five bays, I believe, full drive-throughs.
Using all brownfields.
But that's still the ultimate plan, yeah.
And they're full-time?
They're full-time. Do you remember? They have, we put them to seven?
Yeah, they have two per shift, and they have one extra firefighter during the day, Monday through Friday, until that daytime.
And then they run full-time EMS, so.
So if they have a fire in the evening, you have two on. And they're called the 12th department.
It's handled by, I would imagine, it's being handled by the home, home people, the community, you know, fire, obviously two people, especially if you're on the medical.
And I think what he says is the two people on the overnight shift will be responsible, meaning for EMS, and then the call department will handle fires?
Yeah, generally, like Southampton has a similar setup, but they do EMS two during the day. They'll go to fire and EMS during the day, but at nighttime, the EMS crew just strictly stays EMS, and the call department handles the cost.
And as you're looking over their numbers, they found that that's the best fit for them.
Right. It's, it's, again, that's best fit for what, what EMS numbers you have, yeah.
Where's their population?
Monson, Denise, I'd say it's, he did.
It does, yeah. It was up there.
I think it's about 9,000.
I was going to say 9,500, so.
Where are they all?
They were increasing too, though, right? They weren't, they weren't.
They do have a lot more square mileage than Hamilton does.
I'd say the tour of the Wolverhampton. In fact, that they're so close to the police station, there's a lot of good news of the data, things like that. The layout they did, as Craig had said before, they have access to the base from pretty much all the officer.
We built a horseshoe around the garage so they could access it. The only downfall is their conference room was right there in the kitchen, so you couldn't have a meeting or a training session, because it was always occupied.
Plus, they, they do have a second location as well.
Yeah, they don't have a location.
They do have more apparatus.
Yeah. I think, if I remember correctly, there, just under 12,000 square feet.
We, we were the generator?
No, I called, I contacted a few companies that have not heard that.
I'm not surprised. What was your number? What was your?
I didn't, I didn't even. About 50.
I opened that up because I sent you the article from, from FOIL. They used a lot of their, a lot of, they get $30 million in ARCA funds, but they used $400,000 for the fire department for turnout equipment new generator, new windows and doors for the department. So apparently that money could be used for, for that, so.
And I think what Bob was looking to, cares, you know, was appropriate for Harrison, which seems like it would be as well.
I, I know ARCA funds are available. Actually, I called the, the head of the Office of Federal Funds in Boston today, and I called him last week, haven't connected with him yet, Brendan Sweeney, just to confirm that we can spend ARCA money on public safety, interpreted broadly, so.
I'd rather you just care as much, seeing an expiration deal on that.
Can you post things for?
You have a spot opening?
One, one spot.
This is not different. Did you get training tonight?
Yes.
We have approved status.
Basically, I had a brief chat. Jane was out today, but a brief conversation with her. Numbers have not been, we've seen in Hamilton. The biggest problem we have, and I think we, the board's heard before, with the state system, sometimes a Hamilton County number gets lumped in. And I think Mary Hill and I should told us before back in the day, sometimes we would get blamed for a Hamilton County number. And it's a little more work for naming to go through, sorting back out, so our numbers aren't inflated. They'll be back in this week and have a new report for us next Monday.
Yeah, the, the, the most recent release from Boston showed that 530 residents in Hamilton were tested. 36 cases positive, and it came in at something in the range of 8%, but that stands apart from the reports that I've been getting from Jane. Where apparently our case is involved basically just two families, and the number is much lower. So the state is really conflating Hamilton County and the town of.
The Hamilton Wilburham Division School District Planning Committee was still looking for two additional, at least two additional people. They're not meeting, and they're not having their first meeting talk, probably 20. We're still looking for two people to participate in that. Kristen Gummaw, an officer, she has a degree in secondary higher certification, except she's a Wolverhampton resident.
Yes.
So.
Now, the question, is she a rep from the town government per se, or?
Right, right.
So I think that. I do know Doug White, he's a volunteer, and you mentioned somebody else's brother.
Yeah. Kristen Gummaw, yeah.
She's the parking rep for.
Okay, but she doesn't.
Right, she works for the county, and so it's kind of like a question.
Yeah. They were looking, they were looking for kind of town government people.
I have some concerns about the selection process for the steering committee. For one thing, I understand now that you're saying that you're, you've already selected some people, and you're down to looking for two more.
The 101, great.
Sorry, just, just.
Just, yeah, so far.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Because the steering committee, the last time that they came up with a letter, they sent letters of requests for people to join, and they had selected about 20 people from both towns. The problem was that.
Who selected them?
That's a question that we don't know the answer to. We asked for transparency, we never got it. I actually sent a letter to the student community via email and asked him what the selection process was, and he never replied. But I have the names of the people who were selected, and this list was given out as a subcommittee of these school committee. And out of, I don't know where the names came from, but there was a lot of overlap with the military task force people, and. And it's like twenty-two, twenty-four. And, um, so I'd like to know how you're selecting these people. Um, what happened with the steering committee back in, uh, I don't know, but the reason that they said they were stopping that strategic planning was because of the lawsuit. And maybe so. But at that point in time, they did not have a Camden administrator on the steering committee. We only have one principal. I don't understand why we needed to have at least her on it. And then there was no educator from Green Meadows. That's our only school. And yet, there were probably three or four principals from the Wolverhampton schools and certainly many teachers, educators. And, um, I don't know what's going on with those, but, um, based on that.
This isn't fair with your facts you said before. They sent us what they're asking for.
They, 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 they sent us a letter asking them, uh, Miles is running the, the strategic plan. And they sent us a letter asking for two or three people who are in government, um, for now in Camden, in Camden. And they suggest a selectmen, someone from the advisory committee, someone from maybe Parks and Rec or, uh, library, library for this, uh, for group to plan how they're gonna do the other groups, the other subgroups, another group involved.
Yeah, I think that's how we understood it.
Yeah, since it was already pretty common.
So you're not to the stage where, um, we'll be approaching members of the community closer?
Not that we know of, not at this time.
Uh, maybe.
There might be, there might be something.
I think, I think it'll come down the line, but I don't think that's where they are right now.
So for the time being, they're looking for three members of Camden's government.
Yeah, I told, they asked you particularly the selectmen, someone from the advisory committee, and then they, when they said Parks, your rec or library.
Because when it comes around to that further expansion of the steering committee with the educators, the parents, um, I think that bears watching very closely to ensure that there is reasonable representation of Green Meadows and the Camden community, community. If it wasn't last time, I'd be happy to share that information with you, Craig. I'm pleased, Craig, that you're, you're going to serve. I am concerned, um, that the member of the advisory that was both on the municipal task force and on that proposed list is now being mentioned again as being the person from advisory. Um, there are, what, how many people on the advisory? Five? I think it might be fair consideration that some are the other way. The person who served last two times is selected.
Yeah, we have an opportunity to engage with the school in the near future, perhaps, if we bring that up.
We, uh, I had, I had a meeting with super then again, and, and, uh, we discussed this and I told him I was not interested in having an unequal group of people. And then I would be interested in having a fifty-fifty spread on all of this. It seemed to me to that. Let's see where that goes.
Again, it bears watching, in my opinion, and.
Doesn't hurt to have it in the back of your head.
Well, I also said that I wanted to have at least two forums down in Camden.
Yes.
For people to come. And then an additional two forums, one, uh, for the draft, you know, when we get done with all the year from the draft, and then we'll define the part.
One of the reasons I'm listening to Mr. Brandon Carroll is that when the topic of the steering committee, uh, strategic planning, um, comes up and he's somewhat challenged as to what is the selection process and oh, well, he sort of has downplayed, the steering committee saying there will be ample opportunity for residents, parents, whoever participates in the process. That said, I still think that the people who are on the steering committee do serve a very important role. And, uh, so again, I'd be happy to talk to anyone.
I did hear what you were mentioning there, and I think Laura was challenging them on the actual participation of who was going to be allowed on the steering group. If, when I was listening to them.
I, I just reinforce that steering, let's keep the word steering. Give you a sense of what their role is. And, um, so the makeup of the steering committee is crucial to the outcome, even though they're not doing the hands-on work. They are steering the project in a certain direction. By, through the makeup of their membership, which is fine, because that's their role, but it should be a relevant form of. It's gotta, Camden's gotta be.
Right. Any else on that? We got, uh, general bylaw amendment, this is my thing. So I'm proposing a general bylaw amendment fulfilling vacancies on elected or appointed town board committees. And, uh, and even cap rule. Basically, the only, the only different, the only code, would codify how we get this done. And it, uh, the one thing that, the big change I suppose would be is that like in many towns across the Commonwealth, we would interview jointly the persons on the elected boards would interview jointly the persons. So it was the planning board, the selectmen, or cemetery commissioners, selectmen, or actually rec and selectmen. Assessors.
Library.
Library. And, uh, we would meet jointly to interview the people and both, both jointly in the course of, uh, chapter forty-one, section. So I'm offering this to the board. You can put it on the, if you have a vote of the board, I suppose, you could put it on the, uh, town special town meeting. Take a two-thirds vote. It does circulate to the other boards, yeah.
I had a couple of concerns about what you had written.
Yeah.
Before we get into any others, that you mentioned appointing authority, you know, shall mean the moderator, the board of selectmen, or any other. Um, I know the town administrator sometimes appoints ad hoc committees too, and I think you had a decision here of an ad hoc, where there's no mention of the town administrator appointing anything. Because he does appoint certain things, if he appointed fiber optic community. Stuff like that. Are you looking for elected boards or strictly?
Well, I think, Don, if I read this right, I mean, there are already appointed boards that the selectmen have, the conservation commission, et cetera, zoning board. None of that changed. We interview those candidates and we make those appointments. It's just strictly to, use the word, kind of insert ourselves in the review process. The appointing part will never change. That's always been by law, a joint meeting. I would make a caution, you know how I, I feel about this, I'm sort of in a plankboard. I do think Rich Point was wealthy. That it can seem to be like a bit of a special interest thing, and to have a better, a larger view on it, or a by, a law changes, this is important. Doesn't mind, you know, make it look like it's a targeted thing. I think there's some strong argument of the fact that should be a large, well-attended game. And honestly, uh, what are you gonna say? The horse is out the door. This would take effect going forward, you know, so why not have the garage exposure to it? If you, if that was the case, then I would support you bringing it to the.
You made mention here, the next annual town meeting election.
That's, that's where it is until that.
Until that point, so. I, I liked the, the thing, and I like the concept behind it. Um, I do agree with what Rick was saying, really, that having it in front of more people would be a good option. Just so they don't, for transparency, you know, sometimes people think in special town, you know, they try to sneak things through. I hate to see it come back, ever trying to sneak something through, even though we agree with it.
All right, what else you got?
Uh, that was it. I just added a couple of reviews things, I would.
So your, your voice preference is to put this off and bully.
I would support you putting in on, you know. I appreciate your.
But I will, I will, I will, in the meantime, I'm going to send it to the other boards, it'll be a while, so they can know it's on. It's safe.
Okay. Also, if you'd like, maybe throw the south there. Even on the warrant, for discussion at the special, I don't know if that makes, if that makes sense.
Right. They don't tell me.
That, that's not coming back to the left. Now we gotta get a warrant.
All right. Yeah, we'll move forward on this. I'll send it to the other boards, they can look at it, have their comments.
Now we got that nice booklet.
Uh, special town meeting warrants, you.
I mean, we got a couple of placeholders here. This little lake, we are coming down to a month here. Do we have any verbiage for the national lake plant, the, uh?
I did speak to town council about that uh, last Wednesday. And tried to light the fire under her to get, get it done. She said she's working on it. And, uh, she said there are, there are boilerplate models available, but other towns have used, so. I'm confident we'll get that one relatively soon. As you can see, in the most recent version, I updated the police budget adjustments. And if you take a look at the savings, it's mostly the result of the decision on dispatch. And the town is going to save about two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars.
Well, the one on the CPA agency, the email from Doug that he has been calling CPA meetings to discuss revisiting the historic districts or the appropriation of the register.
I did send, uh, a message to Doug today. He, he had said that he was going to bring, bring some articles forward. He sent a message back saying that it may only be, uh, the proposal on a, an historic district.
Right. We have a proposal, and I think I reported the board from housing authority. But we're first out until the spring. I think go back to where, you know, what's the purpose of special town meeting? There's no urgency for that. It's a reimbursement.
Town council is also going to provide language for Article Five.
So restrictions on, deep restrictions on the land.
And then we have the classification changes. We're in a preservation, it's still placeholder.
Ross, what, you have the, you were gonna have the conversation with the gaming commission.
Correct.
Do we have a number on that? On the, uh, small bit bridge? We have the maximum dollar for.
Thirty thousand.
So a dollar for dollar basis?
Yes. No, we got thirty-four. They, they estimate that the project is sixty-four. And our contribution is thirty.
So we can do it not to exceed, basically, just to show. What was the cruiser cost?
The cruiser is forty-five thousand. And what they're going to do, I mean, the, the total cost is fifty-three. It's thirty-nine plus thirteen. But, um, I've asked the chief to give us an accounting of how much they have from, uh, the sale of the used vehicles. Uh, they anticipate turning in one of these vehicles. They, they anticipate seven thousand dollars, but he said that, uh, both of them are going to be over a hundred thousand, and it's gonna be more like four thousand dollars per car. So, and then he said, we can take, obviously, the trade-in that we get and apply that to, to the new vehicle, uh, put in the equipment, the lights and so forth.
So basically, there's plans to just both trade-ins offset the difference on this current car.
That's where we are, I think.
But the money we appropriated in May.
Yes.
Sorry, last money we appropriated for cruiser. Was that inclusive of the trading as well?
Yes, it was.
So, well, I know that this is the trade you talked about this time.
Yeah.
So we're using that trade in twice.
Well, we got, I think we got seven thousand on the trade-in from the spring. And he's anticipating it's going to be around four thousand for the two cars, the one that was, uh, that he's going to order, and the second one. It's gonna be about four and four. And he got, I'm sorry, he got seven for the car that was traded in last November. Anticipated delivery in January, didn't get delivery until July. That's the one where he got more money on the trade-in.
So what, you know, how many cars do you have now that's traded?
May meeting authorized one. And the proposal for this meeting is to authorize a second one. That would, these two cars would replace two patrol cars with high mileage.
Right, so one here where, yes, one of the budget they already made.
Yes.
But that's fifty, forty-five. How much is he asking for for the cruiser in the warrant?
Forty-five. I'm, I'm sorry, fifty-three.
Fifty-three, so that was forty-three, is what you're saying.
Thirty-nine and thirteen.
So that one was forty-one.
Yes.
And then the trade-in for both, they'll put it back in the May.
Right.
So fifty-three and thirty for the bridge.
Here's, um, okay, and then, now that's from, that's from last week, but those are the correct numbers.
So we have to adjust this. We have to adjust this to the forty-five.
Forty-three thousand with no trade-in, that's a good price.
Yeah. With a pop. Four forty-three, isn't it?
Forty-nine, I'm saying, that's a target price.
Let's go back to the police budget adjustments. Okay, so you took out all the, all the dispatch ones, except for the people who live there, right? And, but we're negotiating a contract. So we wanna take it all out?
We I had said to the union at the table last week that we need to get this done so we can fund it at the special town. Uh, don't have an estimate at this point of how much that will cost. So we may not. We can either take out less or add money from free cash. When that happens.
So let's say we don't, we don't settle. And we leave this like it is, and we want to pay for all those other things, which add up above the same thing. And where do we get the money then?
Basically, how much are we running short?
Yeah.
We have enough to pay until then. At the annual town meeting, you got the fact you spent ten-twelve for the budget. Assuming the budget went up whatever number, two percent, because of racism, you still have enough cash appropriated where a funding change would be.
They'll take us in, they'll take us into the spring and then we'll cover it.
So, yeah, we have enough money.
Covered, yeah.
We have enough money this year.
To keep paying the bills until.
We, we haven't really determined what we're gonna do with free cash. But I'm assuming you're going to do, like you did last year, put in five to six to lower the tax rate. And then you're going to have another half million dollars. Uh, some of that probably will go to, uh, stabilization, maybe some to, uh, OPEC. Uh, I know the treasurer wants to take three seventy and pay off debt, short-term debt. You haul back fifty or something along those lines. We could easily cover any contract changes, uh, from free cash in the spring.
Well, that gets back into, again, confirm that we're the dollars of the state, but we've never left money for the cash or things like that. And as Don said before, we have total requests that are almost equal to, with down to dollars with the savings and the pieces.
Right, exactly.
So basically, a one point one million dollars in free cash that we're not using special town meeting.
Right.
We have requests from the treasurer, the payoff from debt. Do it at home. Good idea. There's no warrant, our OPEC right now.
Right.
But stabilization takes the place of that. So if we put it in there, further action of the board could appropriate a, a separate stabilization account for it. And then what's the number from the assessment? What's it gonna take to make some type of substantial?
I think those numbers are on the sheet that I passed over.
Uh, not for the tax rate.
Not for the tax rate, but.
No, I mean, that's.
These other articles.
Right, so that's pretty much savings takes care of the article. So one point one, less three hundred thousand for paying down debt. And then you have, just like Don said, you put five hundred, like, whatever, five hundred against the tax rate, four hundred in savings. Actually, it goes down, savings account goes up, things are paid for.
Until next town meeting.
Well, certainly, a lot of towns do keep some free cash put aside until the annual. Just let it go in case you need it.
Yeah, that's kind of what the reserve account do. Here's what you could do, and that's even better thought if you wanted to appropriate some free cash towards the reserve account and inflate that a bit.
What's there to them?
Ten percent.
There's no, there's no stabilization.
There again, stabilization is very healthy, it's over a million.
Right.
So.
So if you're looking for that flexibility, if you're looking for that flexibility, put that fifty thousand in the reserve account, therefore use that. Yeah, I find that's.
Isn't it fun to be able to say we have all this money?
Never happened at home.
Never in places, can't figure out where to put it?
I really would like to get a good sense from the.
Don't get used to it.
No, no, the assessment, the trigger, but it becomes a tax rate.
All right, so then we get the building, accessories, classroom, library, highway, that's the truck. That's gonna be set divided into two articles?
Well, at the last meeting, I guess I didn't quite hear, but John reminded me that he had suggested that we break it into two articles because the public may want to fund one, but not both. So it gives them an opportunity to fund the excavator and the truck separately.
I do have to say, I think Mark made excellent support of the fact that that thing we paid for in four years, five at the most, what we're paying for rentals.
Yeah, that was a good, great.
If, I think, with detail on that, we can project up. Makes it easier.
Oh, when you're talking about market, reminds me, you saw the salt pits.
Yeah.
It was fifty-two dollars a ton last year, sixty-eight dollars a ton this year. Uh, I asked Mark what that means, he said, if it was just a regular winter, about twenty or thirty thousand dollars. So we know, you know.
The worst I remember saw was ninety-two dollars a ton.
So, but I, I guess my thought there. Our, our snow and ice, you know, sorry, thirty thousand, twenty or thirty thousand. You know, the, the.
There you go.
All right, general bylaw amendment, we're gonna put on the annual town meeting, short-term debt.
So we're gonna take article thirteen off.
What was, uh?
No, that's Summers Road, Crosswalk.
This is.
Okay, now this is, this is an update because I split.
Oh.
Oh, it's different than what we got here. I split, today I split the highway department request into two articles. So we're taking off the general bylaw amendment for filling vacancies, correct?
Okay.
That was the number from the three something?
Three seventy-four.
Three seventy or something like that, three seventy-four.
Now with radios and trucks.
So I take that off, we got short-term debt. Have to be determined how much.
So basically, we have two long-term debt payments now. We have, obviously, the high school and we have the police station. Now, there's been a report also from the finance department of the school that they're looking at refinancing the high school, which would represent up to twenty-two percent savings in their annual payments. So that actually could well adapt even by a hundred thousand dollars a year.
We know.
I agree, Matt.
But that's something we have to consider. We have two large-scale projects that are, that are on our radar at this point. Fire station and the senior center. Which the senior center at this point is a lot closer to the finish line than the fire station is. But I think it is something that at this point, for next town meeting, I think we should, it's more of a now, take a plan for what we want to do with the senior center. Uh, maybe we know that they, the parking lot, the Cadillac that they proposed for one point nine million or something. But the addition to the senior center, I think, if you look at the debt, we're right, we're falling off. It's easily affordable for this town.
Have they gotten grants for that? Or are they?
We saw that, like, Becky brought in the presentation to the capital committee, it was, it was pretty solid. The worst thing, well, most oddest thing we saw was the parking lot, I remember there. One point something.
Who, we ever seen that?
Money wise or?
Yeah, money wise.
Oh, I, I don't remember getting it from that one.
It was, yeah, the parking lot was at one point one.
Worst thing?
It was at the, presented at the capital.
We went after that.
Did copies?
Yeah.
We had a quick meeting with the Time Bond this afternoon. A good meeting with DPD approved the water project. Just waiting for the final sign-off from the, the, try, on come approved. I don't, final sign-off from DPD and that project moving on. They're working with Bob on putting it on the central register, right? Either, either Bob or Time Bond is gonna be putting it on the central register.
Yes. Uh, my understanding was that they were gonna do it, and I have to check with them, because I can put it on there also. But it's gonna go on this week, and it usually takes until the following Wednesday before it appears.
And just a way of, FYI, I asked the Time Bond, they said that the.
Yeah.
Okay, then we got, I've got minutes. Skip over the minutes, I got minutes for August thirtieth.
I saw them, motion to approve those notes?
Second.
One favor.
They stopped in, I saw a mumper building Friday when I was here. They were hoping, it wasn't like they were misled, they were hoping they could get any decent work. Not aware we were closed on Friday.
They were here on, they were here today. They came in today. I think they're just about ready to cut over.
They are, they're just waiting for the rent. I called him or left a message for him.
Speaking of rent, anywhere on boat floor, new equipment, you think, or, or a few weeks they were gonna assess what we had?
I will, um, talk to.
Anything from the clean company about a boat for parking lot? Person would be done with the season.
I can't see it.
I appreciate Parker Rec's patience, I really do. You know, it's not you, it's the.
Well, I mean.
You're trying to give somebody business and they don't get back to you.
Well, it is an all.
Okay, you're gonna go on the generator.
Sixty thousand dollar generator.
I just think it's, for me, there are two young girls who come in and do the work here. I would feel
anyway. Anyway, don't mail the check and they'll call you. Again, yeah, don't pay the, I'm taking voice, you're gonna call.
We have selective reports all the way to those.
A pretty normal meeting at the CWA. Are not having a housing authority meeting this month. The next one, the first, I see, I think it was Flipper. And again, we hope that Clippers recovering well, he's been doing a great job remotely. Best of you, Chris.
I don't have anything other than Whip City Fiber and Bob and I had a meeting in Wilbraham, so they'll probably go over that with his administrative side.
Bob had a chance to chat with the chief and the national light hour is coming up. Is it the eighth?
Yeah.
And I think at the next week's meeting, the chief will be here and he'll give a little update on what the plans are for that.
Oh, don't administer any part?
Uh, well, again, a lot of, a lot of time this week, the whole business of the planning board and the vacancies. As Craig pointed out, we did meet on the thirteenth with Whip City Fiber, they initiated the changeover. Uh, we also met on the fifteenth in Wilbraham with members of the fiber optic committee, Wilbraham Town Administrator and their IT people to discuss mutual collaboration during fiber build-out. And we had a very good discussion with this private company that is doing work in, in Wilbraham. Their representative was there also. So I think we're, I'm not sure how much mutual collaboration is going to be, but both sides were interested in doing everything they can and learning from one another.
So what, what is the thought process? What, what's the?
Well.
How's it gonna work?
There's, there's, first of all, it's a lot of money in the pipeline. Uh, not only federal money uh, through this, and, and infrastructure bill that I guess it's gonna get voted sooner or later in Congress, even more money. Um, the community compact program has added a new category, fiber optics. I'm waiting on that, the first application for, for, to get the community compact grant for that isn't until, I believe, next month. What they've done with the community compact program is that they've staggered the application dates. And so, uh, the fiber optic component is later on, I have to check, check the.
Just to add to that, I think what Bob's talking about with that grant money there is, it would pay for fiber optic um, report, like a strategic plan of how we could utilize it in town.
Like the one I, I passed up from Wilbur.
Yeah. That would be the next step.
That next step. You get a consultant and they basically tell you what you have to do.
Now, this is separate, people have to understand, this is separate from our municipal.
Correct.
Right, this is talking about.
Right.
Personal hookup, basically, making the option for somebody other than Charlie.
The municipal hookup, we could be a purchaser from lines and saving more money.
Right.
Based on their numbers and their figures, it seems like there's a lot, there could be a lot of cost savings in residents.
And better quality.
Better quality dramatically lowering the level.
Uh, quick report then, I guess, on landfill, people that may have gone up there might have seen some steel fencing going up. Process is beginning. Uh, most of, I think, all permitting has, if you're online, I think all permitting has been taken care of at this point. And now it's just the paperwork and process came through.
Is that the turtle fence?
We had the amber, that was the amberstone conference call on the fourteenth. All about turtle habitat and how we keep the turtles away from the site where the solar application is going to be constructed.
And that's why we're doing the, the water article for conservation.
Yes.
Well, it's an offstep, but so yeah, so these ballasted things that are up in the air have been disturbed, the turtles have to be controlled on it.
All this is basically being mandated by the Fish and Wildlife, Massachusetts Fish and Wildlife.
The gate at the landfill has to be adjusted so they can't fall underneath the gate as.
Well, when they open the gate, there's concern that basically opening up the site for the turtle to just walk around or, or whatever they do. Go right up the driveway, and they can get onto the site.
That'd take them all day, Bob, seriously.
So the discussion was basically.
If I can speak.
Structurally prohibiting turtles from getting into the construction.
Right, but while the place was open, there was no concern. We don't have to have a gate during hours of operations to be in that.
I was just gonna say, they're gonna build a second gate there, if you've followed that. About twenty feet up the road. The problem is, is that we know the gate is left open too often, unmanned. People leave, they don't close it. The gate that was there, because of the slope of the road and the design of the gate, it was not easy to make use of that to have a turtle block. So you have to set up a whole second gate system. Uh, we're, if I'm understanding correctly, we're gonna sign the papers in the next day or two.
I don't understand the gate.
The cur, the, the current gate.
The big yellow thing.
Right, the yellow thing. Because of what it is, there was no way to put the proper sweeps in to drag on the ground to have a seal to keep the turtles out. Because the, one of the problems is the road is, has an upgrade there. So as you swing the gate, it becomes closer to the road because the road is rising to the gate. So you can't, you couldn't have a fixed piece there. So by moving the fence, if you look at the turtle fence, it runs up the road twenty or thirty feet or so. And they're gonna put in a temporary gate there during construction that will be easier to facilitate to have a sweep to keep the turtles out.
It's gonna be closer to Cross Road.
No, it'd be up the hill a little farther.
Oh, I see, okay.
It's gonna be into the, into the, um, the dump farther. And this is, all this is only during construction.
Construction gate that would go in and out, the problem there is, when you get into the winter, who's clearing the space and the gate will go back.
One of the things we found out that the, the current gate is not always locked, not locked, but closed. So they had a, that was another problem, so we had to come up with another method.
Tom, Jerry, can you justify?
It's not the easiest escape to do, one thing we are looking at is, as a permanent solution, probably swapping out to something that's later for the operators to use as well.
Thank you. Uh, what else do we have?
Uh, I'm all set.
You know, some of your turn to here. Plan board here.
We, our, you know, we got some here, so.
What?
I believe I, I need to post it.
No, don't, yeah, well. But we can just put both now and you're not here. That is the suppression. All right. Let's see what else I can educate you with.
So, uh, community affairs. You know, we're still looking for members for what at this point?
Well.
Water commission, one. Ken, on top of it for anybody or?
We have currently three ad hoc members. So we're waiting to see what they are gonna decide or not to decide.
If you wanna go out of the minor leagues and join the major leagues.
If I may, as chair of the capital, we're looking for two members. One never really started with us and he's kind of back in the circle. And the other resigned about three, four months ago, so we definitely have two spots. And I put him on the agenda for tomorrow night.
Right. We've got more planning in this. Anything else?
A firefighter.
How do Parker make it out? Will they find a full-time person?
They have somebody that's stepping in for the season.
Yeah.
There's no guarantees this person is gonna be there. He's filling a void until the season's over.
We actually have new kinds of.
I can let me run down and get some information about community compact, maybe we can make some decisions on. We are eligible now to apply again to the program. You have to skip a year. The grants that we got for, for GAF and for the classification compensation study were in fiscal twenty, fiscal twenty. So fiscal twenty-one was a skip year. And now we can apply again, I was just printed out, I was looking at the timelines and so forth. Let me just get that and we can decide what you want to apply for.
I was surprised to see it. First that I heard about this, that later was, what was the name of this, the last name movie? And is it on for, to hope for purchase by tech?
Yeah.
I'm just curious. I'm just curious that it wasn't brought to the intentional.
I think I mentioned that the last time.
We never had a chance to discuss it.
Yeah, we talked about that in terms of like, at what point what the biggest rock is for? What's the cutoff that, that's something that's like the truck? That's basically in business, it's a truck. You look at a dump truck, we come to our board, it's the F-150 was not. So this is.
I have, sorry, Bob is in here, I have a new shot, I'm out of it. It seems that, from my understanding, the threshold is at least fifty thousand dollars. But also, if that vehicle purchase is intended to last nine or five years, that's a major one. So. I know, it just seems to me that somehow this should have been discussed in the Capitol.
Perhaps we're gonna ask Mark to send our meeting on line. That was one of those things where A, you have what's really important and B, Mark's been a very good case. Actually, it's the twelve to fifteen year lifetime paid off in four to five years in the city.
Because they. They rent it once straight every year. The operator process has to license.
Wanting to reach out to Mark to be.
Here's the program. And we can pick two.
Two areas.
We can pick two best practices and then the other ones are also available. You see, he just added municipal fiber in twenty-two. Yeah, that's what I was looking at today. We should be ready to put an application in this week.
Is there a limit coming in the pipeline or is it?
Just the limit in best practices is two. And then the others you apply for separately. And see how they're staggered, efficiency starts in January and the fiber program doesn't start until next March.
What would you do for the IT grant?
What would you do for the IT grant? Will we, will we best utilize that?
Probably to do. Well, I thought of two things. Digitize, start digitizing. If you look around the building, we have filing cabinets, we are grounded in filing cabinets. We could begin. The long march towards paperless. Probably take three, four years, but. An IT grant would give us funding to get one of those. Machines that would do industrial strength scanning and so forth. And the way it would work would be. We would affiliate with one of the companies, there are three or four of them. And for example, the clerk would then have an icon on the desk. Where you could click the icon and select birth certificates, print it right out. Doesn't have to go hunting in the vault so. For documents. So eventually you get that. The expense for the hardware. Be between twenty and thirty. Probably closer to thirty now with prices going up. But we would get a grant to do that and get started. And we would give everyone the software on their desktop, which they could use to bring up the documents. I mean, we have a lot of documents right now in electronic format. But this would, this would be more comprehensive. And. We would, we would go forward and digitize all new documents. And then over time. I know what towns do, they put the machine on a roller cart. And you roll it from one office to the next and an office gets it for two, three hours during the day. And once they're up to date, then they can have staff or even interns in the summertime start digitizing old files. I mean, there's some files we have to keep in paper format. Usually those files are clerk's files. But there's a lot that we don't have to keep in paper format and.
What about the. Planning board? They're here, they, I mean, they have these big, you know, things, I mean, is there something?
There's a big machine. Well, there's also a large format scanner. I know other communities are using, using bigger towns and cities. Where you can do those, those plans electronically. And a lot of the engineering companies now have that capacity and they're submitting plans electronically.
Conservation as a total.
Yeah, I will say, having been involved with, there's nothing the same as having this size as a. But you're right, after a while, I mean, I'm sure you guys have stacks of rolls of trees, subdivisions extending actually six degrees. At what point does that go into old storage?
Do we have any, do we have any? Store, I mean, do we have a place where we start things off, besides the transfer station?
No, we talked about using. We, we did get an expansion of it because we were able to use the storage area as the police station we had down off the level one, so that's extremely.
And the other advantage of digitizing is that. Paper stuff turns yellow, susceptible to fire. You have the digitized records are redundantly stored, so you don't lose them.
No, I see some departments, I mean, building and planning is only, that would be, would be a lot of oversized ones they have. But other departments, either unsure but certainly used. Because the law she has to make, but they also made a point, they have to make paper copy.
That would be great if we could get a machine for all the departments like Concom, planning. The assessors, all of them, and take all the blueprints, all the maps. All that type of large scale documentation and get it digitized. It would be fabulous.
What are we gonna do with those monks we hired to write this?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that.
What are we gonna do with all the monks we hired to write this?
We don't, you shown to me, I have not seen them.
Right, planning board. We're here, take a seat, grab a seat.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, we're here tonight for our joint meeting. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Of the meeting to order. The joint meeting with the planning board and the select board at seven twenty-three P M. So what we've done is we've selected two applicants out of the six. And what we're looking for is if you'd like to. Speak with them, interview them also, ask many other questions that you feel are relevant. They're here. And introduce yourselves.
Christina Further. And Heather Beatty.
Heather was previously, when we had an opening on the board. Heather applied. That was last year, I believe. And she's a very strong candidate at that point. We opted to pick Madison, so hopefully we will agree for who. Heather, there won't be no battles between the two of them. And Christina came to us in the second round of applicants. We interviewed her and felt that she was a strong candidate also.
I do, I wanna have a couple of questions for both of you. And so with Christina, because you're closest. I'm just curious why you're interested in the planning board at this particular time? And how come you didn't run in the last election?
I'm not sure when the last election was, but I just recently moved back to town. We closed down our house on the fifth. We've been renovating since then, so a little hectic, but I did hear that there was a vacancy and that it was a rather urgency. And had been looking to become involved in the town in some way, so I thought this would be a good opportunity to get some exposure.
Okay, and you say you just moved back to town?
Oh, I'm sorry.
In August, you said?
Yes.
So are you a registered voter in town?
Yes, I actually just got my confirmation in the mail last week.
And Heather, same questions, why are you interested in the planning board now? And how come you didn't run in the last election?
I did run the last time. Or I was interviewed the last time. I'm referring to.
I was actually going to the actual town election.
Oh, the town.
So I knew you were interested before. And how come you didn't pursue it after that?
Okay, I recently retired from a full-time sixty-hour a week job last year. And now I'm at home, older than I used to be. And, and I'm interested in doing something, something new, something where I'm gonna learn something new, something where I can contribute. And, you know, I have done volunteer work in the town many years ago when my kids were little. But since becoming an attorney about twenty-some odd years ago. I have been working, like I say, sixty hours or more and just didn't have time and now I'd like to contribute again.
And what type of attorney area?
I was a medical malpractice defendant.
And you're still current?
I am, I don't have an active license right now because I just had to re-up and it would cost three hundred dollars and I'm not practicing law right now. So I did not re-up as active, I re-upped as inactive. But I, my understanding is that this position is not looking for an attorney.
It just, it's nice to have a background. In your interview, you had said you would serve on the cultural commission.
Yes, cultural.
What was your role in it?
I was the chairperson. Well, I served for a couple of years initially and then I was the chairperson.
And then Christina, I want to jump back to you for one second. In your interview, when you were asked about reacting on emotion. You gave an example and you said you wouldn't react on emotion, but you said you'd find it difficult to provide. You said it'd be difficult to react based on the situations you impose. So I was a little concerned that you. Might not be as reactive based on your emotional presence.
I think I might have referred to the examples that I gave, that those were difficult situations, but knowing. That you're the person to make that decision is what makes you feel beyond that difficulty and make a decision unbiased. And it just. Where I previously would have had a hard time, it gave me the strength to know that if it's not a difficult decision when you're in that position. It was a good learning experience.
Very good. Who's right up for? Watch your questions.
You said you moved back to town, you were, did you grow up in town?
I did, yes, my family moved here from Springfield when I was four and I lived here until after college. During college, I lived on campus, but after college, I lived in a few different places. Bought a house in Palmer and then moved back after four years.
See, Don, I don't know. Did you, I mean, you came through the school program, the scouts and things like.
Yes, I was.
Do you have a deep awareness of what?
Yes, I was in the Girl Scouts, I think, through my freshman year of high school, if I remember correctly.
So I, I went to vote, all we had to do. I asked, John graciously asked seven of my questions, which I really appreciate. I then went home and watched the tapes. And it was two replays. And my understanding from the tapes and the replay is that the. Planning board was unanimous in their belief that Heather would be a good member to join the committee, is that right? But not unanimous on whether Christina, it has nothing to do with you, Christina, it's just Madison, I believe, you thought that Don Collins. And Rick might be good choices.
I thought they were all candidates, but as we spoke.
Everyone was really good.
But John and Jason both.
And Jason, you. You like Don Collins and you like, you like Rick a lot, but you thought he hadn't been in town long enough with a look at his own experience. I think you said that, I think the board needs some diverse, very prospective. That I probably won't be pushing toward Richard, I think we need one more person. We're going to have two folks who are relatively new to town the last five to ten years, I think we need three folks on the board from decades in time.
Yes.
And reference to Don, you said Don has plenty of experience, good planning, obviously you've been in town. And then you also mentioned Mark as a person because of her architectural background.
Architectural background.
And John, you agreed that. That Don is very strong. And you're marrying Madison's opinion that you're stepping up and that would be important. Definitely stepping up with his experience and so. You know where I'm heading with this.
Well, you know, what you didn't hear, okay, was after the meeting, okay, Don had come up. And said he was somewhat relieved. Okay, if you're heading down the pathway with Don. And am I correct in saying that? And we asked if he would consider being an alternate candidate and he said he wasn't sure if he would like to be an alternate candidate. I kind of put some doubt in my mind. I don't mean to throw a wrench. So. That put, to be honest, I put a little bit of doubt in my mind.
Instead of a D B associate instead of a full time?
Yeah, we were, we had asked him about, because Rick, you know, Rich has been the alternate for quite some time. And I don't, you know, we'd have to talk to him, but I don't know if he'd be, we're gonna come back full time ever. And we thought maybe we'd approach Rich and ask him if we wanted to pick another, if we wanted us to pick another alternate. He wasn't on the hook for it. So that's what we were kind of thinking about after.
Since you had a wealth of riches placed in front of you.
So, yeah, and I, I still haven't changed my, in Don. Very strong candidate. The commitment thing troubled me at the end. Like you said, I'm someone with. Like you said, I'm someone that you didn't pick. So that's when we talked about. Ultimate member. And even then, he was somewhat non-admitted to that.
And you did an analysis?
I did an analysis based on all the questions asked. So I kind of broke my criteria down into mathematical form. No gut feeling, no deliberations, kind of went off all the questions that were asked that we provided and the questions that you had provided. I gave everybody a score based on their answers. Yes and nos. I didn't give any work scoring because work varies. But I had a couple of strong candidates that really stuck out in my mind and scored really high based on the criteria. So when you guys were deliberating, did you have set criteria you were looking at? When you were just determining who you're going to meet personally?
When I, when I was interviewing the candidates. I figured we had three people on the board, it was already a fairly diverse age and gender-wise and number of years in town. And honestly, when I was interviewing, my thought was to somehow get the planning board to represent actual demographics of this town. And in doing so, I felt that there should be. You know, if you look at the demographics of Hampden, the vast majority of residents of Hampden are from forty-five to sixty-four. Basically, our candidates. Yeah, it's, it's almost double. So, you know, based on the census data, you're looking at twenty-five to forty-four is about eighteen percent. Over sixty-five is about eighteen percent, about thirty-six percent from forty-five to sixty-four. So that really played a role in my mind. You know, not as an end-all, be-all for who I picked. But if I've got strong candidates and we can somehow get a board that actually represents the town residents, that's what I was pushing for.
This is something, actually, you have experienced this, I mean, you came from the select board in Love.
Yes.
It's not like you've never been involved in.
No, I certainly, and I think it's, you know, it's always been valuable in my time in local government to have varying perspectives. I mean, it's, it's the whole point of having a five-member board is that you really got to sway some opinions. If you, if you want to sell your, you know, want to sell your, your point. And I just thought that, you know, as a voter, I hope that my representation in the town reflects that talent. And doesn't, you know, isn't biased to one segment or another.
I can really pride the record of wanting to have a younger demographic, you know. Fall into that category and try and step up to do the right thing like you were mentioning. But I'm concerned as well that, you know, you're limiting your candidates based on a criteria that doesn't seem like it could fit the mold. Because they're in a different demographic. I, I feel like if you're, if you're passionate about the town, no matter how old you are, you can have a good say, you know, be supportive of.
Who did you think would be better than the two candidates that we brought up?
I can, why? I can, yeah, I can break it down by my, my score. So obviously, Don was my number one pick because of his background and criteria. Going off what you guys said, okay, there was a commitment issue, so I agree. Heather was one of my candidates as well because she scored very high on the, the questions asked, the demographic chart and, you know, service and experience. I also had Marquis Mojer as a top candidate based on her architectural design, her background and a lot of other things. I really pride Christina for stepping up because she's got a lot of determination, a lot of guts to come in, back into town and wants to get involved with it. I'm just concerned that. She's, you're going to have to bring her more up to speed than some of the other candidates we're in. And that's where I had a concern.
See, the other, the other thing that I was looking at is I'm figuring we have three people on the board already with an engineering background. So another thing that I was looking for was somebody who would be able to understand regulations, not so much plan.
Do you want a copy of how I wrote down my criteria?
Yours, yours than me, I just got my chicken scratch. Yeah, so, so that was, you know, that was kind of my thought on being comfortable. Getting away from someone who's got something, you know, has a background in real estate development, economic development. I mean, I'm sure you remember my questions, they were all basically.
They're written down right there.
All basically, you know, engineering related, so.
Yeah, economic real estate development background, most people said no.
Right, exactly, so, you know, it was one of those things where. You want to give me some highlights?
Craig? As opposed to what, pertaining to what?
So these are the order that you had?
I, I didn't, I didn't mean interview order, so they're listed in interview order. The number at the very end is how they ranked. So the green squares were, were like, you know, yes was a one, no was a zero. And you can see how I titled it, you know, all the way through. And like, you know, watching the interviews over again, I went through the criteria, how they answered the questions and gave them a yes for. You know, how they answered or if they didn't answer, if they had no experience, they had a zero. And then I totaled it at the very end, you know, then there were some footnotes in there for, you know, honorable mention of different things.
Yep, yep.
I was trying to make it more analytical than anything.
Yeah.
And not trying to base it off of, you know, instinct, you know?
No, understood. I mean, so we're not really very far off. I mean, does the update today? Do the questions today change any of these?
None of the questions I asked changing these, no. I just, you know, you guys mentioned that Don was probably not really sure about it. So I don't know, you know, how that holds to, you know, because it wasn't an official meeting, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it was, part of it was that, but also I envisioned what if we picked, because what if we picked Don over Christina?
Right.
I'm, I, my hesitation that that was then would be a little skewed on the higher-end of the age bracket. It's not, you know, none of my, again, none of my thought processes are hard and fast, this is just how I tried to make the decision.
Sure, and there's no fault in that, I understand.
Yep.
And my, my thought process was I'm looking for. Two people, one, both of them with experience that I thought could, you know. Jack used, John used the term toolbox, you know, toolbox. And I thought that was a good analogy when he was talking about Heather. And then I thought to myself, it's also a good analogy when you're talking about Don or Mark. Because they would have that kind of background, they'd be like, John would be the sixteenth. He's the eight-sixteenth wrench and they'd be the seven-sixteenth wrench, you know, they'd be both in the toolbox. So my preference came down to, to Don and Mark for the second spot, I think. I think I agree with Heather is the first choice. So we need a motion of some type.
I guess you may, I'll make a quick comment. You know, I respect the role of the planning board, as you know, I was on the planning board for sixteen years. When Don told me he was interested in being, I had to think, this guy is a strong candidate. Chairman like I was, decades of positive experience, knows the bylaw, he like I, and road model. His reticence that, as you expressed, obviously can change the dynamic there. Jason, I think the points you made are a hundred percent right. In my time on the planning board, I served with twenty-two different people in sixteen years. From all walks, some came on for reason, some came on, as Christine said, I want a chance to serve. They didn't run last election? Didn't know. Some people don't like running against people. They just like to volunteer and be out there. Your role in cultural council was a volunteer job. Somebody said, hey, you want to be appointed? Do I have to run against anybody? No, yes, I'm happy to serve. I think I bet the same thing for you. Growing up in town, you saw many people serving all different roles, coaches, scout leader, civic officials, if you will. Back in that day, Don was on the school board. Don't blame him for your school. With his own hands, he put that rock wall up and then tore the top down. But you know, when I'm getting back to.
Does the kid recline on the roof? Thought about it, then you're still fighting.
So, but back to you as a board have difficult role, I know. Not like the three of us to sit back here and enjoy ourselves.
Yeah, you guys got it easy.
Yeah, we give it all to body. I have to respect what you guys do, you have to live with it. So from my personal standpoint, if you feel confident in your choices. Who am I to say, unless you made something so egregious that we have to step in? You have to live with your choices if we agree with them until next May. And that's where it is.
And for those who.
You brought, you brought Madison to us last year, November, roughly? You know, and great choice, no one had to. We did a good job interviewing, we weren't involved at that point. We were able to ask questions, it's when I think it came to us. We don't see anything wrong with the process you did back then.
In case folks didn't catch my sarcasm. It's not all.
From personal experience.
From personal experience, I can tell you, my wife said that if I ever ran for select person against you, divorce me. Just as FYI, that.
What was your answer?
Absolutely, that, that is the hot seat. That is the hot seat.
So we're pretty excited for it.
No, no, thank you. I actually didn't have a town. Um, the choices. Being on the board for so long, I've seen a lot of people. I like fresh faces, okay? I can teach somebody to read a plane, I think we, Jason said, three engineers with a background, I can teach you. Can't teach you to have the passion to serve the town, at the towns. In town. And that's why they were all good candidates, okay? And again. It's important for me, for younger people, okay, to serve on the board. But also, and I know it sounds a little crazy, whatever you want to make of it, but. The board now is three women, if we vote these people and two men. And I don't think that's ever been part of the thing. I understand, so. For women to have an interest, that, that strikes me as pretty, pretty good. Mark, again, she has a very good heart, she's a strong woman. Okay, so, but that's how some of the.
I think most towns would like to be in the situation where they have overqualified people stepping up in an abundance.
I think you've got a criteria, I think there's more women in town than men, am I correct in saying?
Yeah, fifty-one point four to forty-eight.
So that's, and that's, that's where I'm going to go with it, Jack. So again, the board somewhat represents if we, if we vote this.
The process, I think, we did last time, Don, was that one board made a motion, the other board gave the second, and then there was discussion. Never done two before, so I guess we.
Motion to approve Heather. That's true.
To the, yeah, and then the town clerk will take care of which spots you would have run the major event.
Correct, I don't know who's. So, motion to approve Heather.
Is that the motion to us?
Well, it's a motion second, then there's a joint vote. I'll second the motion to Heather to serve until the next town election.
Any other motions? Hearing none, take the vote, welcome, welcome. Mr. Matthews. Mr. Pickler. Mr. Brazil. Mr. Bruce Ford, Mr. Davenport, I stand. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Maybe, maybe, yeah, don't come back at us.
Motion to approve Heather to fill. I'm Christine, I'm sorry. To. Fill a spot vacated until the May town elections.
One second.
One second now.
Any further additions? I'll nominate Don Collins. One second.
I respect that based on, it wasn't really interesting, sir. I, I again, back to.
You really didn't say that, I think it was just.
One second. All right, hearing none, welcome.
Just hear me say, there are people there, all the same.
We have a motion, I can get through an upsdown on this one.
Okay, sorry, I was.
So we made a motion, there's been a motion for Christine.
Right, you made a motion for Don.
There was no second.
Can there be another motion for another candidate?
Yes, yes.
Why? I was just saying, I mean, we have enacted motion second for a vote. It seemed like we would go through, if that vote fails, then. I don't know how you have.
I was, one, one question.
And I, and you have a question, this is uncharted, but.
You had a second there?
I seconded.
Yes. Just so I'm clear on what's going on. We're voting on the motion for Christina.
Right, until the second.
Fill the second spot, okay, I.
Yeah.
Hi.
Congratulations, Christina.
Thank you.
Could I ask? Who would have been your nomination?
I personally would refer to offer.
I can all finish up. Yes, yes.
And congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And that did, once Don said what he has to say. That can, yeah, so I don't want you to think that. I like we discounted any votes.
I don't think you did at all.
Okay, I'd like to make a quick comment and dovetail to what I said before. You seem like a very good person. I personally would have voted Mark. But I respect the planning board in your position, having been on. You're a broad, unanimous recommendation for her. And you accept that, that's why I support you, I'm sure you're going to be fine.
Thank you.
But I will tell you, you know, Mark is a very strong candidate.
So you got.
But you have, you have to, her. Dad doing the work for them.
I want to thank you for volunteering at a young age and getting involved in town politics, I think it's, I think it's great.
Amazing.
Box effort.
Town clerk will be in tomorrow, usually at ten o'clock this morning.
She's not even now, but.
She went in, you have to do an ethics sign-off, a little bit of a sign-off, she'll give you all that paperwork.
So do we have to arrive at ten?
No.
No, anytime.
She might even get me done anytime before your next close to meeting.
Okay.
Next close to meetings, I mean, and state that we've got one.
Coming Monday?
Yeah.
Then you have Tuesday, Wednesday.
Tuesday, that's when they get thrown.
It's kind of busy time.
So yes, just Wednesday, just one, one item. Very, very simple. But again, Joanne, see Joanne, so she'll give you the book.
Okay.
I'm showing.
Okay, great.
It's online, so, yes.
If you haven't seen that A and R with Jacob, I was like.
Yeah, but we won't. Yeah. Yeah. That's.
Thank you.
I'm waiting.
Turn our. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Struggling as like an engineer kind of automotive technology.
Okay, fair enough.
I read.
You know, like right, right, should go into executive session for service. That's right, you're going to have discussion among ourselves with the.
Now they have what I, for good advice.
Thank you all, thank you all. Uh, do we actually have more to discuss?
Go ahead.
Any, um, contract?
Yeah, I do, I do.
See if everyone leaves.
Everybody else, get these people out of here. I'm going to get a session, thank you, thank you.